Okay, welcome everybody to this meeting of the Select Boards Committee on Policing Reforms. And we usually start off, or recently, we've been starting off with an opportunity for members to make announcements, comments, what have you. Anyone interested in taking advantage of that?
Yeah, congratulate Casey on her award. It was very nice.
That was the Officer of the Year Award.
Right.
Okay, good. Yeah.
Thank you.
Casey.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Can we propose a vote?
Let's just say that the feeling of the committee is that Casey is congratulated.
I think that we, as well as anyone in the community, certainly know about her contributions.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay, any other comments? Seeing none, let's move on. So the first item on the agenda is the discussion, oh, I'm sorry, we have minutes, three sets of minutes. Thank you, Devin. We have, if I can remember, 3:24, 3:29, and 5:12, I believe it was. Have people had an opportunity to look at the minutes?
I, this is Ron, I have. I do have a question, though. On the agenda, it says that there was also an April 28th minutes, which was not in the packet, so. So we're voting on the three that are in the packet, and I'm trying to remember if there even was an April 28th meeting. I've just kind of all getting the message now.
There was a meeting that day. It was approximately one hour long, and I have not finished. I've not finished the minutes. It takes such a long time to re-watch these, and with the Eight Nights of Town meeting, I was a little strapped.
Right.
Okay, that's fine. So we're voting on the three that are there.
Yep.
Yes, and then I'll circulate that last set via email if you don't meet again, so that people can.
Don't meet again!
Well, I heard a rumor that this was the last reforms committee meeting, the last.
So much fun.
The last task force meeting will be next Friday, so I just wanted to try and get all the ducks in a row, but I was not able to complete that last set.
Well, if they're meeting again, we have to too. No, just kidding. Okay, so any comments on the three sets of minutes that we do have before us? Okay, seeing none, all in favor? Let's see, Devin, we had to take roll, as I understand, so can you call the roll?
Yes, hold on one second. Marty Rosenthal?
Yes, for once, yes.
Bob Sable?
Yes.
Ron Wilkinson?
Yes.
Casey Hatchet?
Yes.
Paul Yee?
Yes.
Raj to Honda?
You can mute it, Raj.
And Bernard Green?
Yes. Did you call Bob Sable?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, okay. Okay, so our next discussion of select board consideration of school resource officers and walk and talk officers. Now, you may recall that we, and let me get my notes here. We voted regarding the walk and talk and SRO programs that pending further input from appropriate stakeholders, that the select board vote as police commissioners to maintain the SRO and walk and talk programs as modified by the recommendations from the Community Outreach Youth and Non-Traditional Roles Subcommittee. Stakeholders shall include, without limitation, students, teachers, administrators, parents, and the school committee with regards to the SRO program, and BHA residents, staff, and commissioners with regards to the walk and talk program. So that was our vote. We presented that to the select board, and I, following the instructions of that vote, sent around a letter to the school committee and the BHA commissioners. I also copied the committee, or at least sent it to Devin, so that she could send it to the committee and I wouldn't violate the law. I don't know if people had a chance to review that, but, you know, basically asked the two bodies to, you know, do their due diligence and report back to the select board with their findings. We have received from the Brooklyn Housing Authority a memorandum, which I'm gonna have a few words about in a second. It's in the packet. And I apologize for not being able to get it in there earlier, but, you know, if people have comments to the memo, please send them to Devin, and, you know, she'll share with me. So we have the BHA response to our request. The school committee had a subcommittee meeting, I think it's called the Policy Subcommittee, and they sent some comments to the school committee itself. School committee did not act on it, I think it was a couple of weeks ago, and sent it back to the policy committee. The policy committee is going to be taking this up on June 14. Now, you may recall that June 15 is when the select board is supposed to act on this. You know, it is what it is. And I think as a practical matter, since the new law states that the superintendent can ask the police department to provide a school resource officer, that, you know, my position is gonna be the select board should just wait until they get word from the superintendent, which will probably be the beginning of the school year, before we do anything. And of course, you know, since it's summertime, that status quo really is, you know, doesn't really create any issues for anyone, shouldn't be. So that's where we are with SRO.
Explain what the, there's a draft propo, draft vote of the school committee in our materials suggesting that the SRO be ended. Who wrote that and what is its status?
This is Devin. That is a draft that was presented last week at a policy subcommittee meeting. They are having another meeting this week. That meeting, oh my gosh, it wasn't even last week, it was June 7th. You can find the meeting minutes from that on the school committee's website. I pulled this document directly from that location for you all to take a look at. It was deliberated at that meeting, and there are going to be further changes to that document based on that meeting. And then, as Bernard said, they're gonna meet one more time, I believe, this week, and then again, the next Monday, the subcommittee will meet, and then the full school committee will meet later Monday evening. But I did just want you to have something in front of you on that item, so I pulled that from their public packet.
Thank you, Devin.
Thank you.
Now.
Yeah, I, when I read that draft document, and I was very happy to see it, because it suggested that a lot of thought had gone into it, and that a lot of stakeholders had been consulted. You know, not just, it was just like a few people in the policy committee, but they'd done a survey of many, of a lot of students from grade six to grade 12, as well as other stakeholders, including the SRO officers themselves. And it sounded to me like a lot of thought and effort had gone into what's happened so far, even if they haven't reached the final vote. So I was very encouraged to see that, because I was concerned before now that not enough people would be consulted, would be consulted and have a good variety of input. So to me, it's, the draft sounds like a very thoughtful and well-worked out document, even if the final vote hasn't been taken.
Any other comments?
Yes, I have comment. Bernard, as you know, I've circulated the Boston Globe article.
Is this related to SRO and walk and talk?
Yes, yes. That's the one that talked about Somerville school system and several other towns. Please let me finish. Several other towns where there've been questions raised about the SRO. And I think there needs to be some discussion about it. I assume you saw what I sent you, and other members of the committee. So I encourage some comment on that.
Yeah, Casey?
Well, my comment would be, and I did read that article, it makes no reference, actually, to the school resource officers. It appears that the school administration contacted the Somerville Police and did not work with an SRO, which may have helped avoid what appears to be an unfortunate situation there. It looks like the school maybe did not follow some of what they could have done without involving the police in terms of filing, you know, with the state and whatnot, but I don't, I did not see in the article, I could be wrong, that there was any mention of it having anything to do with a school resource officer.
Well, it was an incident involving the arrest of a child, and pretty stupid. Can I finish, Raj?
Yeah, absolutely.
And from the standpoint, from my standpoint, it's a pretty stupid decision by the schools. And they got a lot of blowback from that, and in the wake of that blowback, they decided, without any connection between the incident and the SRO officers, to put the SRO program on hold. So, I mean, yeah, that's an interesting story. It has nothing to do with the SRO, though.
I was going to say it has nothing to do with the SRO, but it, to me, it has to do with how things quickly get out of hand when there's insufficient information and lack of communication, I would say. So I think that's important, and that's why I advocated so strongly that there be all relevant stakeholders and lots of transparent information be available before making these kinds of decisions. Raj, have you had a chance to see the memorandum that is in the packet about what the school committee has done so far? It says, "Draft SRO Recommendations V2" in the packet. I thought, I think it's a very, I think it's a very important read. And I like the idea that so many stakeholders have been consulted, and the final decision will be made by the school committee itself, as opposed to, say, just our committee. So that's the way I feel about it.
Yeah. The, and I'm looking for that. And the final decision should be by the superintendent, but.
Oh, okay.
Hey, Devin, could you? I always have problems with the shared library or the OneDrive. Could you? Is that, did you send us a link? I got a link to something.
Yes, I can resend the link to OneDrive.
Now, let me, I'm trying to manipulate.
You want to share your screen or something like that? Is that what you're trying to do?
Yeah, if we can do that.
Bernard, before we move on, I'd like to make a couple of comments.
Yes, is that Janice?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. First of all, to preface it, my stepdaughter is on the Somerville School Committee.
Oh, really?
Yes, so I will tell you that if all you know about the incident is what you read in the paper, we do not know what really happened, and she is not allowed to say anything, so I don't know any more than what I have read in the papers as well, because it was done in executive session. And until the mother actually files a formal complaint, nothing beyond, you know, what we read in the papers will be out. So we really don't know the story, and it's, and so I just wanna, just a little caveat about what we read in the paper is not necessarily a complete story, nor the facts of what happened. So as I say, I don't know. She is very good about not saying anything she learns in executive session. But I do know that no complaints have been filed, and so it is still, all the information is still in executive session.
Yeah.
So can I, I'm sorry, go ahead, finish.
And the other thing I want to say is that, while it's true that some municipalities are reevaluating SROs and and taking them out of the schools, I actually was on the Cape this weekend, and in Falmouth, they're celebrating the appointment of their new schools resource officer, which has the full support of the school superintendent there. So, you know, we need to do what's right for Brookline. But I think, so, and I think that really that's what we should do when we evaluate something, but not really look at what's happening in other places, that we are, you know, we have our own unique challenges and and characteristics, and it's really important that we get it right for Brookline. So that's my comment.
So my question to you, Janice, is, are you questioning what the Globe article said?
I, about the boy?
Yes. And perhaps similar thing could happen, perhaps, hopefully never, hopefully not, but it could happen in Brookline.
Right, but that's an issue for the school, not for the SRO.
Right, yeah, you're talking about the boy. So I will say that schools have to, when they see, for instance, and I'm not saying this is what happened, you know, say if a teacher notices injuries on a child that is suspect, they by law have to report that to the authorities. And as, nobody knows why there was involvement, nobody knows the full story, because that's all in executive session still. But all I'm saying is that, you know, before we sort of cast judgments on things, that we really need to wait till more things are revealed. And as I said, the mother has not yet filed a complaint, and so it's not public.
But this committee is not looking at the behavior of the school committee and the public schools of Brookline, and that incident had nothing to do with the SRO officers, at least as we know. Matter of fact, if the SRO officer was involved, then it would have had a different outcome, is my guess, based on what I, based on what's in the article, which is an argument in favor of the SRO program. And we have incidents here in Brookline where similarly, without the SRO officer involvement, the child would have suffered greatly. But, you know, the SRO officer was able to divert them from involvement in the criminal justice system and provide the kid with the assistance and help that he needs. So, you know, not only is Somerville not, you know, we shouldn't, you know,
So my question.
Judge our programs by Somerville. The incident in Somerville is not even relevant to us. So make your last point, and let me hear from.
So my question to you is, in Brookline, what, if any incidents have required involvement of SRO?
Okay, Casey indicated that a couple of meetings ago. One particularly horrible incident, and there have been others since then. Marty?
All right, well, before I get to what I was gonna say, I just wanna take issue with the wording of Raj's last question, require. I mean, what the SROs do, a lot of it is not required. They help people, so I'm not sure of the pertinence of that question, but let me get on to what I wanna talk about, which is that I think on both of these issues, both of the memoranda that we got just today, I've tried to quickly look at them, and both of them are thoughtful, but neither one is unequivocal, and neither one has a clear-cut recommendation. Both of them talk about re-examining the SRO role and trying to make it different, but neither one, to some extent, they're both talking about a title that maybe we get rid of the title, but you could have something that does similar things with a different procedure and a different title. Anyway, my point is this, which is that I've talked a lot about the need for other stakeholders to make this decision. As at least Chief O'Leary knows, there's nobody that's talked more about the role of police commissioners probably in all of Brookline than myself and maybe former Chief Samar. And so I'm very privy to the power of the select board to make police policy. However, what we have here, and some of you may not know, and I don't, this and a dime won't get me anything. I also have a master's in political science, and what we have here is two other independent elected agencies that are in charge of these particular constituencies, the school committee and the housing authority. And I think it would be very important for the select board not to just jump in and make a decision without trying to come with, to a consensus with each of those separately, as to those programs and as to what to do next. I don't think either one, either one of them is saying, just get rid of it, period. They're both saying, let's refocus and reexamine. So my suggestion from us today would be that we urge the select board to continue the process of dialogue, respectively, with the BHA and the school committee to examine possible changes in the SRO program, something like that. I mean, I'm horrified at the prospect that they'll just take a vote next week based on these very equivocal sets of recommendations. I just, I think that these two programs have become somewhat of symbols, or some might say scapegoats, for some people that are more anti-police than I am. And the irony to me about both these programs is, we talked, and Raj, please ignore the next few words, in the 1987 report, we talked about community policing. And I still believe that's a very important concept. And late, more recently, you've had something separate in terms of phraseology. I think it's the Obama report, talking about guardians, not warriors. And I think both of these programs personify that spirit. And I think I sent to everybody the Globe front page story about the new. about the new chief in Central Falls, Rhode Island, talking about community policing. So I just think it would be very inappropriate for the board to just scrap these two programs based on these very equivocal and complicated sets of recommendations. And that what's needed is basically a pause and a more open-minded posture. So I'd be happy to try to make that five-minute speech into a two-sentence recommendation if we could, if you want a motion.
Yes, sir.
But pardon me, I would, I would like to share my screen and just read even the first three or four paragraphs of the memorandum from the school committee and the SRO program. Because I think it establishes a kind of a spirit of engagement that I think is very, very important. So I can, I can share my screen and just, and/or read those first several, few paragraphs. Because I think it's one way of getting us to a, to a, say, a less adversarial state than we've often seen about these things. So do I have permission to go ahead and do that?
Sure. Any objections?
Go for it.
Okay, so I think, okay, so first of all, you know, this has been voted on yet. It says the vote's gonna happen in June 14th. But this is the content of the recommendation. In arriving at this recommendation, the school committee members convened multiple discussions with a myriad of stakeholders, including central office administrators, school principals, administrators, educators, guidance counselors, community leaders, elected officials, parents, students, law enforcement, and the school resource officers themselves. Stakeholders represented a diverse array of backgrounds, experiences, interests, and perspectives. We received input from individuals across the socioeconomic spectrum, many of whom identified as one or more of African-American Black, Asian-American, Latinx, and/or white. The format for community engagement included conversations, formal and informal, multiple rounds of public comment, as well as an anonymous survey taken by staff and more than 600 students. School committee members review the history of school resource officer programs in Brookline, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and nationally, as well as scholarly research on the efficacy of SROs. Nearly all of the adult stakeholders, regardless of demographic or stance, agreed that the current school resource officers as individuals are good people with positive intentions, whose commitment to our students and impactful contributions to many of their lives deserve recognition. The school committee concurs with this assessment. One student shared during a public meeting how he personally benefited from the relationship form with his school resource officer. By recommending the ending of the SRO program as currently constituted, we do not seek to dismiss or otherwise minimize these reported positive experiences with specific SROs. Rather, we seek to examine the school resource officer program at a macro level through a systemic structural framework, be coupled from the individuals within that structure. People move in and out of positions, systems unless change remain the same. And it goes on from there. And it takes a lot of history into consideration. I'm not gonna read the whole thing, it goes on to several pages. But to me, this is a very thoughtful position. And I don't see it as just being equivocal. I see it as being comprehensive and taking into consideration all of the concerns that people have. And I think that as long as when it's voted on and considered by the superintendent, it takes into consideration all of this input and all of the evidence, you know, objective and subjective that's there, I think that is the best way to reach a positive outcome. And positive outcome is, what I define is what's best for Brookline and what's best for the people in Brookline. And it does not start with physician, a pro or anti-police physician. It just kinda starts with, like, this is, this is what we have now. This is the way it shapes up. This is the way it compares of what's going, what's going on in other places. What we feel is the best way to handle this in Brookline. I, this seems to me like a very reasonable way to go. I'll stop my share here.
Any thoughts on that?
Well, there's no question that.
Marty has a hand up.
Sorry, go ahead, Marty.
Well, I'm happy to defer to Raj.
Okay, Raj?
There's no question there needs to be debate about it. There's no presumption here that one solution is for everybody. My whole point in this thing was that there needs to be more discussion about it. So I'd leave it at that.
Yeah.
Okay, so do I have floor back?
Yeah.
So I don't disagree with what Ron said about the thoughtfulness of this report. However, I think that respectfully, he may be missing the bottom line of what I'm saying, which is that in spite of that thoughtfulness, or along with that thoughtfulness, I find the actual vote to be at odds with the language of their seemingly bottom line as stated in the text. The actual vote says to recommend ending. But then the last sentence that Ron read, I think is much more equivocal. It says recommending the ending of the SRO program as currently constituted. And then we seek to examine the program at a macro level. I'm not positive what that means, but they're basically talking about looking at it further. And then you look at the very last sentence of the report is collaborate with the school department, town bodies, and other stakeholders to produce an alternative to the SRO program as currently constituted. So, you know, it seems to me that's a much more thoughtful and tentative bottom line than simply the one sentence at the very beginning that, I'm not sure it's an attempt to summarize it. It says recommends ending. But I think that if I were on the select board now, heaven forbid, I've been there, done that. But if I were there, I'd want them to spell out a prospective set of recommendations in accord with what they've said here in the text.
So I have a question. How long has the SRO program been there? And what is the history prior to that?
Actually, a lot of that information is further down in that recommendation. It talks about it extensively. It's definitely worth reading. But it mentions that there have been several, I'll say, police community relations programs through the years that have come and gone. And the latest being called the SRO program. And that the latest version was only implemented in 2019. And it was, it was a kind of a belated implementation of the earlier state mandates to put SROs in schools, which is as a way of adding to the protection of students. But it talks about the history of various programs. It's actually, it was like several pages to read, but there was a lot in there that I thought was worth reading and answers a lot of our questions. Looks like Casey has her hand up.
So I'd just like to clarify that we've discussed the history of the SROs like so many times during this process. It's surprising that we still don't have it quite right. We, the SRO program, the SRO title was reconstituted in 2019 to cover all four officers that we have working in the schools. The program itself, for our three middle school SROs, has not changed at all. We felt that it was more transparent, instead of calling those officers dare officers when they taught the dare curriculum, or aware officers when they taught the aware curriculum, to call them school resource officers. Because beyond just coming into the classroom to teach things like cyberbullying and, you know, dating relationships and whatnot, they do so much more in the daily calls that they get from members of the school administration. And so when Caitlin Cunnealy's position at the high school, which was created in the spring of 2019, was created, we put all four officers working as a resource for the school under the same title of school resource officer. It did not change the role of the three middle school officers. They are the same, essentially the same officers doing the same role that they have been doing, you know, for decades in the schools. Whether it was the dare curriculum, or the aware curriculum, or the safety curriculum, we have been in the schools for many decades. And this was to bring them all under the same umbrella.
So do you happen to know, when was the first time we had the police officers at the high school, for example?
So as a school resource officer assigned full-time to the high school, Caitlin Cunnealy's position began in the spring of 2019. However, we have had officers working in the high school, teaching classes, and being a liaison to the school for decades.
Yeah, but that's a different role. That's a different role.
That is a different role. You're correct. But we have been in the schools. It's not that we just suddenly appeared there without having a presence. We've been in the schools for decades with a partnership, teaching courses, being part of the school community, just not having an office actually there. And in 2019, the school invited Caitlin Cunnealy in as a school resource officer and gave her the office, which has been the subject of also much discussion. But the entire history of that program is written in the subcommittee report of our, of our subcommittee on community programs and youth and whatnot. And it does lay out kind of the history of that.
So what do people think of Marty's proposal? I kind of like it myself.
Marty's proposal in two sentences is?
Marty? Two sentences now?
Boy, I'll tell ya, this is turning my bad habits against me here.
Yeah, basically, to tell the select board not to jump in, I'm reading my notes. So this is what I took down. The select board as police commissioners should not jump in and decide without consensus with the other two entities. Both groups asked to refocus the programs. And select boards should suggest that they continue dialogue to make the changes that can be agreed to in a consensus, in a consensual way. Is that close enough?
Well, I would take out the words "jump in", but maybe make it a little more something or other. But I think the point is to request from both independent elected agencies, boards, a more clear-cut set of recommendations as to what should happen next. I mean, and not just to end the programs. Because both of them are talking about alternatives, but neither one spells out the alternatives. So I'm probably complicated whatever summary you just made. But Casey maybe can do solomonic anything here.
I agree with that, Marty, because, you know, if we vote, you vote next Tuesday to disband the SRO program. Granted, we're right at the end of the school year, which is helpful. But, you know, if the next day the school calls and they're looking for support from, you know, which they do on a daily basis, call our SROs with, you know, we had an incident at a school last week where there were students that got into an incident on the playground. And there was a racial undertone to it that our officers were brought in to help, you know, mediate between the parents and the students and be involved. We had a safety issue at another school. We had a call from the Metco director two nights ago regarding a pretty significant safety issue at another one of our middle schools that we, you know, could take that call at 10 o'clock at night because he knows our officers and have an officer on scene in the morning to ensure safety for all parties involved. And I'm just curious that, is there gonna be a direction on how we handle that on June 16th? That's gonna be something that we're gonna need to know how we're being directed, how the school resource officers that no longer exist are directed to handle those calls? Or are we just responding as a 911 call to the schools? Or, yeah, we'll have to figure out. It would be nice to have some direction as what we're to do as we are moving down this program.
So I guess what, hold on, I think what Marty is saying, maybe a little clearer way of putting it, clearer than what I said, is that the select board and the school committee and the housing authority should, you know, not make a decision, but sit down and talk about what type of future program will be developed since both entities are saying, I mean, saying conflicting things. But, you know, the bottom line is they, you want a program that is different in many ways, or in some ways.
My, my, yeah, okay. My interpretation is that they're saying that they value a lot of the service, a lot of the positively motivated services provided by these programs, but recognize that there are people who also perceive negative things about the way the programs either are or could go. And that they want, they want a way of providing those positive services in the future without the, without the potentially negative, potentially negative effects. And so it's like, I hear, I hear very much is, we want the positive services one way or another. There is, there is question among many people about whether, as currently constituted, those services can be provided relatively unambiguously, I'll put it that way. So that's what I'm hearing. And my agree, the sense in which I agree with Marty is, rather than the select board make a very abrupt decision at next Tuesday vote, that they direct and permit the school committee and the housing authority to develop a concrete set of recommendations for what the court revamped version of delivering those services is. And that eventually this, and they recommend that to select board, which eventually votes on it. And to develop that revamped version of the services might not be until like maybe the end of December or something like that. But, but it would be too rash to abruptly pull the plug like next Tuesday when the independent elected bodies who have really kind of looked into this perceive positive things about the programs, but are also concerned about ways that negative things can happen that they want to change.
So my question is this. An incident in the playground in front of the high school, how is that so different than an incident at Emery Park near the tennis courts there or in the baseball field? And if the incident at the playground at the high school deserves an officer, then perhaps the Emery Park deserves an officer?
Don't you go to both, Casey?
Maybe they do, maybe that's the case.
If someone's gonna be sad at Emery Park, I hope the cops come.
I think, I think the key is that you have incidents that happen in off-time hours from school. Those incidents, the school will call the police, and the police will try to make it an appearance. Information will go through the department so they're ready for something in the morning and go up and talk to the schools where the kids are attending and make sure that it doesn't spill over into school. I think that's what they're trying to get at. And that's a thing that goes on on a normal basis throughout the town of Brookline throughout the school year and beyond. You have a person you want to contact, they know the kids, they know the school administrators. The information does not fall through the cracks.
So by the way, I think that what Ron just said a few minutes ago is consistent with what Marty said. And I think it's, I mean, it seems to me it's a good, it's a good thing for us to say to the select board as to how they should move forward. Which is to say, you know, begin, begin a process of engaging with the two entities to come up with their, you know, ideas on how the program ought to be structured going forward. Is that, is that, does that make sense to other people?
Why don't they just table the vote for the select board? Given, no, because the housing authority may have made a decision, it sounds like, right? And, and they want, they don't want walk and talk. So that's very clear. They want, they want the talk part of it. Right?
Talk, no walk.
Right, right. They want the officers to interact with youth in the housing developments and the like. They like the positive part, just like what Ron is saying about the positive parts of SRO. And the school department is, or the subcommittee is saying the same thing as the housing authority, but there's no formal vote of the school department. It only the subcommittee. So I think it's sort of premature for the select board just to vote and pull the plug because I think that each of the entities are saying, we're also rethinking, you know, policing, with destructive policing in our respective agencies. And we'd like to see it a little different. That's what the two memos are saying to me.
Yeah, I think that's what Ron and Marty are suggesting.
So why should the select board be taking a formal vote? You know?
Okay, so we're suggesting they shouldn't, I guess.
Right, right.
So the issue is, let's put that in a motion that we can vote on.
All right, let me give it another try.
Volunteers.
I'll give it one more try.
Let me, let me get my computer set up to take down. Take it down.
It's going to be on tape and I'm sure Devin will get it.
Yeah, okay, but we, I mean, is Devin going to do that?
Well, she looks at the tape afterwards anyway to make sure she gets things accurate.
No, I think, I think what you suggested is that we have a vote on a motion.
Yes, and I'm going to try to rephrase it for the third time, even simpler than what Bernard said. So at this point, I think the motion would be that we urge the select board not to simply abolish either of these two programs and to await further input from the housing authority and the school committee on what positive aspects of the program should be maintained. How's that sound?
I thought, I think, I might have said something, phrased it more as, as what positive alternatives, it'll mean the same thing, but for people who are, well, okay. How does this, how does this thing, positive services? Alternatives, well, yeah, it is hard to craft it just right, but I would, I probably just would have said, what alternative should be in place going forward, should be put in place going forward to retain intended positive services of these programs, something like that.
But the BHA one says, among other things, put together a MOU outlining that. So maybe we should take advantage of that language and say, okay, let's put together an MOU. And also in the schools, you know, that address, I think we need to say that addresses, you know, all the issues that come up. For example, you know, one of the things that Casey mentioned to me was, you know, late at night, some kids were playing basketball at the Dummer Street property, making noise. And of course, you know, the old folks were upset and called, whether they called the cops or they called the management. But anyway, the management wasn't there. You know, they don't work 24/7. So, you know, the walk and talk officers had to go down and sort of work with the kids and work with the adults to sort of resolve that problem to the satisfaction of both. So in a situation like that, what is BHA going to do? Are they going to hire their own, you know, security people? So, I mean, questions like that, I think, you know, we really ought to ask them to address.
Well, they would call the police department and somebody will show up and resolve the situation. Why is that so complicated?
They don't know them, come on.
These are more ongoing issues that, you know, you want just the police showing up and then like issuing town bylaw violations for kids playing basketball in the park because they're disturbing somebody. That does not seem like the best possible outcome for our youth or for the residents whose time is being disturbed. And so, you know, the walk and talk was called in because the managers working with the youth and the residents were unable to mediate that. And they're also not working in the evening when it's taking place. And so they requested us to mitigate that. And they went, our offices went down, they met with the managers, they met with the youth, and they came to some really great, you know, compromises and everybody was happy. It was a really great outcome. And so, you know, in the MOU, there's the memo from the BHA. In my conversation with administration at the BHA, when I saw this, it said, you know, police, you know, no, basically walking around property without responding to an emergency call shall no longer occur. And, you know, we had a discussion around semantics and, you know, and it was acknowledged that probably emergency call, which would be, I said, so we're not responding to anything with BHA unless it's, you know, a call, like a 911 call for medical or, you know, a crime in progress or, you know, a report of a crime. So, you know, that's a very small percent almost even of what our walk and talk is doing in that, in their work. You know, then we've talked about their community engagement, their support of families, you know, at four o'clock when the managers go home, residents have an additional resource to rely on that they choose to use for, you know, advice for, you know, a problem with a neighbor or for helping, you know, work through some issues maybe they're having with a child. And, you know, that those resources go away under this current write-off. And it was acknowledged that probably emergency call wasn't the right term, that, you know, that it's not the intention to stop residents from being able to access an additional resource that they themselves are seeking out. And so I do think that, you know, going back, you know, through this, you know, talking through what the impacts will be for families and for residents who may be harmed as a result of this, I think would be really important. And so, I mean, I agree with, you know, maybe we don't rush to, you know, I'm, you know, again, like, let's rework the program. Let's make sure that it's a program that is welcome for residents and that is providing the best possible service. And, you know, I welcome that. I don't love the idea of ripping away resources that are heavily relied on by residents. And, you know, all those stories aren't shared. They're very sensitive, they're very personal. I don't want to exploit residents that rely on our services day in and day out, just for the purpose of this discussion. It feels bad to do that. But it will do harm in a lot of ways. And I do want to find a way that we can make all residents, you know, feel better about this program. Those who do not like the program or feel that there's a surveillance link to it, but also just pulling the plug on the program and ripping those services away are going to be harmful for families.
So my quick question to you is this. Let's say I was making a lot of noise this evening at my house and my neighbor called and said, there's too much noise Raj is making. How's that so different than a bunch of kids playing basketball and maybe have their boombox or whatever on? And somebody calls and says, look, there's too much noise. Isn't that identical kind of situation?
Yeah, if it's a one-time event, then that is the same. But this wasn't one time, this was ongoing. This was over the course of many, many weeks, which, in which case we have community service officers that if you are disrupting your neighbor and they were calling us regularly, we would have a community service officer assigned to work with the two parties to try and come to some type of agreement for the best possible outcome and, you know, for both parties. And so it's those ongoing issues. It's not just the, you know, the one time call that we get.
The other difference, and I think this is important in terms of a lot of things, is that there's a difference between, I don't know how old you are, Raj, but you're not, you're older than 30 years old. Kids, you know, their brains haven't developed. And, you know, the way they think about issues are different from adults. And, you know, you really need, you know, trained people generally, but, you know, trained SRO officers to appreciate that sort of developmental issue or those developmental issues and be able to work with them in a way that's, that is non-confrontational and supportive. So, I mean, one of the benefits of the SRO officers and the walk and talk officers is that, at least the SRO officers, I know, and I assume that walk and talk officers are trained in developmental issues that teenagers and young adults have, which really require a different type of response from adults than the response to adults.
So are there psychiatrists?
What?
Are there psychiatrists? You said they are trained to deal with issues.
Not psychiatric issue. It's an issue of understanding developmental issues that kids go through and particularly teenagers and young adults. I mean, it's not, it's not, it doesn't require a PhD or an MB to know that. Just requires some sensitivity to that reality. Do we have some language here? Okay, look, Marty suggested a vote and I agree with that.
Does somebody have my last language? But actually, I want to point out one more thing from the school committee memorandum, which I hardly looked at because we just got it today. But I just noticed something in here, which is that middle school students, 72% of them who knew about SROs agreed or strongly agreed that SROs made them feel safer. And then the results are different in the high school. But the one sentence I do want to highlight is, these combined data points, though limited by sample size, at a minimum suggest a need to deliberately rethink how the town of Brookline Police Department and the public schools can best achieve, and then it goes on to say, were the stated objectives. So, you know, maybe that language about deliberately, deliberatively rethinking the SRO roles should be part of our motion. Does that make any, is that, am I complicating things by bringing that up?
No, so do we have some language? I see Devin put some language in the chat room. I'm not sure it includes your idea, but do you see that? Move to urge the select board not to abolish either program and to await further input from the housing authority and school committee on what positive aspects of the programs should be maintained.
Good job, Devin.
Okay, I would say, what positive aspects were wrong? I would ask.
Maybe a preface would says, you know, I don't know if you had to say whereas, but but in light of the fact that both the BHA and the school committee have recognized positive aspects of these programs, therefore we moved, and then pick up Devin's language.
I like that.
Yeah, I like that too. Although I would like to add, they both recognize positive aspects of the programs and have indicated that they want some specific changes.
I think that.
They want to preserve positive aspects and would like some specific changes. Yeah, I think that's right.
Yeah, okay. So that gives us an opportunity to really, you know, get them to tell us what, you know, what it is they want. Because both say that, you know, we want to get rid of the program, we want to keep the program or rebuild it. I mean, it's confusing to me, but, you know, that makes.
No, what they're saying is there are positive, there are positive worthy goals. And it's, we need to understand, and there is the potential for negative things. And we want to come up with the optimal way of ensuring the positive, the positive goals and minimizing the possibility of negative outcomes. And, you know, that's reasonable enough. And they are looking deeply in their own respective programs for the best way to do that. And that shouldn't be preempted by a simple select board vote. We should let those particular entities develop what they believe will be the positive next steps. That's what I believe. That's why I see this.
So I have one other question. Should this be an issue for the PCAC to look at as and when it's constituted?
I see this as more an aspect for the, for the housing authority and the school committee. And depending on what they recommend, what they recommend, there might be a possibility of the PCAC. But I don't see it as being primarily something for the PCAC. I see it primarily as something for those particular independent elected bodies.
I would agree with that, even though I yield to nobody in being a fan of the PCAC. And I'm going to bring that up on the complaint policy if we get to it. But I think, given that these are independent elected boards, I think it should be the select board that deals with them, not the PCAC.
Okay, so in the chat box, there's additional language that Devin put together. In light of the fact that both the BHA and school committee have recognized positive aspects of each program, and I think we should say, you know, what the programs are, school resource officer and walk and talk program, so it's clear. But would like to see specific changes. The Committee on Policing for moves to urge the select board not to abolish either program and to await further input from the housing authority and school committee on what positive aspects of the program should be maintained. I would like to focus that, but what do people think?
I might say maintained and developed.
Yeah, okay, maintained and developed. I mean, my thinking is that maintained and developed, I think, is.
Well.
What do other people think?
I hate to get really nitpicky, but how about maintained and/or developed? I mean, are we saying maintained and developed seems to me different? And to combine them with an and makes no sense to me. So some need to be maintained and some need to be developed, but they may be different.
And/or do you agree with that, Ron?
I don't have a problem with it. I think, I do think it's nitpicking, but I don't have a problem with it.
Yeah, it is nitpicking.
I did right off.
Okay, hey, at the risk of being subject to abuse on social media this evening, I want to ask Casey what she thinks about this, since she's the person, you know, who's most involved.
Yeah, I would, I would vote in support of this, this language.
I mean, is there, and is there any improvements you would want to make in terms of how, or, you know, or anyone else?
The only thing I don't know if we need to include Bernard would be a reference to the school superintendent as one of the, I think, under the new law that his input is required as well. And to include that, that their recommendation would go through to him.
Okay, that's good. Okay, so what about await further input from the housing authority and the school committee and superintendent?
Well, doesn't the superintendent report? Well, no, actually, under ed reform, all right, I'm okay with that. It's hard for me to get used to the fact that now for about 25 years, the superintendent does not really report to the school committee. The school committee is oftentimes subservient to the appointed administrator.
So that change in the law?
From ed reform, when school superintendents became the bosses. And.
Practical matter or is it legal matter?
It's a legal matter. School superintendents have a lot more power than, for instance, Mr. Kleckner.
Okay.
We, there was a move to make the town administrator similarly powerful in 2010, and I opposed it and the town meeting defeated it. Anyway, I think that because of that power of the school superintendent, I think that's a good addition.
Yeah, okay. Any other comments to the languages in the chat box? Devin, could you put in superintendent?
And the and/or developed.
Yeah, and the and/or.
Yeah, just give me a minute.
Okay, so would Ron or Marty like to make a motion once we get the language and make sure we're okay with it? And does anyone else have any comments?
Where does the superintendent go?
I'm not, okay. I'm not, okay, let's see, four lines up. Further input from the Housing Authority, School Committee, and the Superintendent and School Committee. I think the superintendent should be priority. And the comma after superintendent, that's Oxford comment, that comma that helps make things clearer.
Thank you. Oxford comma is one of my favorite things in life.
Wow.
That's a pathetic statement about my life, but.
Right. Well, I go on witch hunts when people use witch where it should be that. Okay, anyway, do people see, see what Devin has done? But let's go over that one more time to make sure we're not missing something. In light of the fact, okay, I'll read it. In light of the fact that both the BHA and SC have recognized positive aspects. Okay, wait a minute, something, it can be edited a little, take out each program before the walk into Janice. In light of the fact that both the BHA and SC have recognized positive aspects of, take out each program, of the walk and talk and school resource programs, and would like to see specific changes. The Committee on Policing Reforms moves to urge the Select Board not to abolish either program and to await further input from the Housing Authority, the Superintendent and School Committee on what positive aspects of the program should be maintained and/or developed.
I might have, just as my own nitpicking, I might have just put in not to abolish the programs abruptly.
What is abruptly?
You know, abrupt means you just kind of cut them off with no further discussion and without consideration of the consequences. You just, you know, boom, we shut them down. And I, I just.
Another way, another way of putting that would be not to abolish either program before there is further input.
Yeah.
From the.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, but further input. Before there's further input. On what, okay, on what? What about, okay, because of that change, I would suggest further input from the Housing Authority, the Superintendent and School Committee describing, describing what positive aspects of the program should be maintained and/or developed.
Or recommending rather than describing?
Okay, recommending.
Or an until abolish either program until further input from Brookline Housing, the Superintendent and School Committee provide feedback on what positive aspects.
I'm surprised that you said that, Casey. It implies that once they get that information, then they'll abolish it. I thought we were trying to sort of leave that question, you know, in their hands.
Right, I guess I was just thinking that programs as we know them, I think will not exist, but yeah. I agree with that, that that's probably not the. Yeah, I retract my recommendation.
Look, we provide feedback. Okay, are we okay with provide feedback? Is that, feedback is kind of vague.
It's a positive aspect.
Provide feedback from what positive aspects?
No, I would say.
I like recommendations better, provide recommendations.
Yes.
Yeah.
Recommendations.
Provide recommendations on aspects on what?
On what positive aspects.
Right, should be maintained and/or developed.
Yeah.
Anyone have any other comments or thoughts on that?
Just let's put it up and I'll move it unless Ron wants to.
Did we take out the until?
Okay, yeah.
Back to the original.
Yeah, what was the original?
Not to abolish either program and to wait, await further input. And then we changed, I think, the later part of that. Sorry, Devin.
It's okay, I was just kidding.
Further input, right, okay. Really making you work tonight, Devin? Yes, we are. Remember tomorrow's Friday. Oh, God. Okay, so you have a couple more days before cocktail hour.
Depends on who you're talking about.
Well, it's my cocktail hour. Okay, so in a way, further input from the, okay, are we okay with that? Okay.
It's what, it's what's in the chat now?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So moved.
Seconded.
Okay, on favor, Devin, can you take role? Not role, whatever it's called.
Yes. Marty Rosen, oh, Marty moved it. It was seconded by Ron. All in favor, Paul?
Yes.
Robert?
Yes.
Raj?
Abstain.
Sasan?
Yes.
Casey?
Yes.
Bernard?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, so what do we do with this motion? What I suggest is that I send that, I'll call her, but I'll send it to Heather, who's chair of the Select Board these days. I am free at last. And what about sending it to the School Committee and the BHA? Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Yeah, and anyone else? I'll send it to the Superintendent too. Anything else I should do with this? Okay, that's what I'll do.
Sounds good.
Okay, great, thank you everyone. So we dealt with that. A little differently than I was thinking, but I think it's a better way. So accountability, Michael is away and as you can see, he's not here. So the two, two things under the accountability subcommittee that I just want to make sure that we are completing. First of all, Sasan's questions or survey that would be used following the, following a complainance, completion of the complaint process. Do you want to say anything about that, Sasan? And I think that we, what, I think what we should do, we should think about how that gets into the system. And I think that all we need to do is to send it to Chief Morgan and to Lieutenant Campbell as, you know, our recommendation in terms of follow up to complaints. Or are we, or should that be done by the Diversity Office?
Well, actually, I'm sorry to jump in, but it seems to me that like some of the other things we proposed, like, you know, going back to the Chalkhole Band, that we're proposing a change in police policy that could go straight to the Select Board. I'm not sure. Isn't this something the Select Board could approve?
Well, yeah, except this is not, you know, a big policy thing. It's just, I mean, it's just, you know, seeking people's observations about the complaint process that, you know, presumably would be information that the PCAC would use in terms of recommendations to the Select Board. I mean, does anyone think that it's more than that?
I don't know, this gets back to the question from 1987, the question, what is a policy issue is in itself a policy issue. It's a circular issue. So I, I mean, my, my feeling is that it ought to go to the Select Board to, to talk to Chief Morgan about it and decide jointly what to do with it. Are you suggesting, what are you suggesting? It can be done by the department without the Select Board involvement? Is that the alternative?
Yeah, I mean, if you want to, you want to send it to the Select Board, what would the Select Board do? Vote on it?
Good. I'm, I'm indifferent. I've got more concern about the complaint policy, so I'll shut up.
I think it should go to diversity, but until that department is fully staffed, it should go to Chief Morgan. That's my opinion. So just so we can have the, the survey out there. And once that the Diversity Department is fully staffed, they can, they should take it over. That's just my opinion.
Yeah, yeah. And, yeah, it should be put in the Select Board's packet, of course, almost as a courtesy, but.
But actually, if it's going to go to diversity, I think that should go from the Select Board. I mean, the Diversity Department is under their jurisdiction. Lloyd reports to Mel. I don't think we can. Should we be giving them a mandate? I mean.
It's not a mandate. Well, okay, let me ask Mel. What do you think? Mel, are you there?
I'm sorry for the delay. Well, you know, I think you can make suggestions, but I think it's true that, you know, a department is under the Select Board. I think you're appointed by the Select Board. I think you should make your recommendations to the Select Board.
Okay, so this is a recommendation to the Select Board and the Select Board will vote on it?
I would assume so. What do you think?
I have no thought. Okay, let's say the Select Board vote on it. Vote to approve the, vote to approve the, the survey and forward it to Chief Morgan and Dr. Gellino. Is that okay?
Although I don't imagine that either one of them would have a problem, but it seems to me they should have an opportunity to have input into the final decision. We have, have we talked to them?
Have we talked to them, Sasan?
Why not?
No, okay. So for input and, you know, once, I guess the question is, since this committee may or may not meet again, who's going to absorb the input and then finalize it to send to the Police Chief?
Well, the Select Board, if they're going to vote on it, they can invite each of them to come to the meeting or to voice an opinion by email or whatever. I mean, isn't that what we're talking about, that they're going to vote this?
That's what you suggested.
Well, I thought that Mel.
Okay, I'm sorry, Mel suggested, okay.
Mel was more authoritative and knowledgeable in saying it.
Okay, so why don't we do this? It'll be on the Select Board agenda for a vote. And if it's approved, it will be sent from the Select Board to Police Chief and Dr. Gellino. And any comments that they have, we will ask Devin to incorporate and then send it out. And of course, you know, consult with Sasan.
Thanks, thank you.
Is that okay, Devin?
Yes.
Bernard, I'm guessing a lot of that language is what's going to happen no matter what. I'm not sure you need it all in there. I mean, I think it's fair to assume that if this goes on for a board agenda, that Mel Kleckner is going to consult with the two of them. So if you want to make it, make it as long as the other motion, that's fine, but I'm not sure you have to.
Okay, okay. I think what you're saying is that, so we should, it should be on the board agenda for approval and directing Mel Kleckner to get input from the two department heads and incorporate that. Is that what you're saying?
Well, I guess I'm saying that I'm not sure we have to even nothing personal, include Mel Kleckner because I think he's going to do it no matter what. So, but if you want to add that to the motion, fine, but I think it's superfluous. It's going to happen, is what I'm saying.
Well, yeah, not everything happens because it's supposed to happen. Sometimes you do need some direction.
Well, I think with Mel Kleckner, everything happens because it's supposed to happen.
Okay, so.
I don't care.
Okay, so, so Devin, you're going to put some language together for the agenda meeting tomorrow?
Tomorrow?
I don't think that this can go on for next week.
No?
No. No, no, next week is a nightmare.
Okay.
Well, we can, we can, if you, if you want to workshop this a little bit, it doesn't have to be here. You and I could do that offline. I can get that on the future list for the following week.
Okay. Is that okay with everyone?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, so next, the complaint policy.
Do we need a vote on that?
Didn't we already vote this? No? I mean, at a previous meeting. Okay, let's vote this. I move that the, the survey be presented to the Select Board for a vote and review and, and review by the Diversity Office and the Police Chief with any comments incorporated before delivery. On favor?
I nominate Sasan to second.
I can.
Okay, so on favor, Devin, can you take role? It's not take role, it's.
Ron Wilkinson?
Yes.
Paul Yee?
Yes.
Robert Sable?
Yes.
Raj De Honda?
No.
Casey Hatchet?
Yes.
Marty Rosenthal?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, what about me?
You moved it, right?
Yeah, don't I still vote on it officially?
I will, sure.
Did you count Sasan?
I seconded.
Yeah, so when I write it out, I say I moved.
Okay.
By, seconded by, and then all the guests votes on the abstention.
Okay, okay, so Marty, you're going to keep us here till midnight on the complaint policy?
Not really, because I'm sure that nobody wants to hear the trees. I just want to address the forest. I did somehow manage in the half hour that we had it to find at least eight things that we haven't really discussed. I, I think that Bernard did this and I really welcome what he did. Am I right, Bernard, that most of it is?
Well, I took what Michael Zurov put together and made some changes, mostly sort of nitpicking and grammar type and clarity, but also four or five substantive changes.
Well, so my point is, is that even the Accountability Committee has only discussed a small number of these, the changes. And I want to basically move that the changes that are on the table now be forwarded. changes that are on the table now be forwarded for early review and public input by the PCAC. That's, that's the thrust of what I, what I want to say. I could tell you about a half a dozen things that I think are troublesome if you want to hear them. But I'm guessing none of you do. Do you want some examples?
Yeah, give us an example.
All right, well, here's one of my favorites that I have talked about in the past. It's a small one towards the end that if criminal activity is suspected by an officer, I do not believe this is, would be a change in the in the culture in Massachusetts. I don't think it should be forwarded to the District Attorney's Office. I think that in conformity with the state bill, it should be forwarded to the, either the Attorney General's Office or the new state agency. What's it called? I forget. Anyway, that's just a small example. What? Yeah.
Post commission, okay.
Yeah, there were others, the changes in the class designation. We never resolved all those. The role of the liaison and chief diversity officer is actually contradicted in here. The first page has the language that we voted about the liaison being present at interviews. But then that's contradicted on page nine where it says if the complainant wishes the chief diversity officer, there's no reference to liaison, may be present and may be present. Anyway, those two things contradict each other. And similarly to the bottom of that same page, if a witness wishes the chief diversity officer, not liaison, or a designee may be present during the interview. Anyway, I just think there's a lot of things in here we haven't discussed and, and it's at odds with the kind of process for public feedback and public discussion that I think is necessary, so.
Okay, so I think the first one is something that should be changed right now unless anyone objects. Because that, that is an updating of the law by the police reform.
Well, no, I don't have that law in front of me. I don't think we should try to do the draft.
So you're saying that it should just be given to the Police Commissioner Advisory Committee?
It needs, it needs a bit, a better process than what we have done and I, for one, would, would spell out my specifics for them. I don't think it's, it's ready to go to the Select Board, is what I'm saying.
Okay.
So that's my motion, that this be conveyed with our appreciation to Michael and Bernard for, for prompt review and public input by the PCAC.
Second.
Okay, Devin, do you have that written down?
Marty, I'm going to need you to say that one more time.
Oh, God, I have to remember. It's already 30 seconds ago. That the committee moves that the revisions of the complaint procedure, I don't know if we should add, which are appreciated by Michael Zurov. All right, that the, that the proposed changes of the complaint procedure be conveyed to the PCAC for prompt review with public input. But, but we have not. Okay, I think I have.
Sorry.
Okay.
A nice second.
Let me read it.
I want to add, I want to add a couple of words that, but they have not been fully discussed by this committee. I just don't want it to look like we've put the stamp of approval on, on all this.
Okay, so give me one second. The Reforms Committee moves that the revisions, which have not been completely reviewed of the complaint procedure be conveyed to the PCAC for prompt review with public input. That's not great. Could be better.
Very good. While you're typing, there's another one I want to bring to attention, which is, it's page 25. It keeps what used to be a biennial review. But instead of doing it by the PCAC, it, it has an ad hoc appointment process, which has been done in the past. I think that's not the way to do it. It should now be done by the PCAC. And I'm not convinced that it has to be biennial. Anyway, these things need some discussion, which we've never done.
Okay. I think it's fair enough, but you know, it's just going to delay the rollout of this, but you know, that's, that's life in Brookline.
You know, our committee in 2009 took a year to go through this whole process.
Okay.
So.
But years were shorter in the 20th century. Anyway, okay, okay, let's call a vote. Since it has been recorded, vote. Devin, do the roll call.
All right, just so everyone is clear. Or do you need me to read that again, or is everyone comfortable?
I would appreciate hearing it again. Sorry, Devin.
No, of course. Do we want to change one review? So it says, which have not been completely reviewed, and then we ask the PCAC to promptly review. Is assessed a good substitution in the first part, or is everyone comfortable with?
I think assessed is better.
Okay.
Has anyone objected to that?
One time indifferent.
The Reforms Committee moves that the revisions, which have not been completely assessed of the complaint procedure, be conveyed to the PCAC for prompt review with public input.
I thought it was conveyed to the PCAC for prompt assessment.
Oh, I put assessed first.
That's fine.
I can change, I can do reviewed, not been completely reviewed for prompt assessment with public input.
How about study? You want to find a third word?
Yeah, Devin's point, I think, was that the review is not a one-time or one-shot thing, but maybe an ongoing process.
Well, that's actually, that last little detail that I mentioned, I think PCAC should have an ongoing rule with this. And I don't think it should just be a biennial thing. But anyway, I'm happy with the language.
All right.
Okay, we're talking about two different things. I mean, the biennial review is the, you know, the assessment of the complaint process that was last done by Bobby Nabel and what's her name? Kelly Race. And, but I thought this was about sending this to the PCAC for their review of the complaint process.
Right, but one of the things I will propose to them is that that particular biennial thing be changed.
So let's deal with that when it comes up.
Yeah.
Well, okay, okay, let's take a vote on that.
Yes, one last time for the chief seats. The Reforms Committee moves that the revisions, which have not been completely reviewed of the complaint procedure, be conveyed to the PCAC for prompt assessment with public input. All in favor, Marty?
Very much so.
Bernard?
Yes.
Ron?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Raj?
Yes.
Sasan?
Yes.
Casey?
Yes.
And the motion passes unanimously.
Okay. Let's move on. Let me get my notes up here. Civil rights, Paul. You have a report, but as I understand, your committee came up with some really important recommendations to the Police Department. And I guess the issue is, what do we do with them? And it looks like the consensus on this committee is that we send them to the Select Board to approve and then send them to the Police Department. Is, is anyone think that that's too unwieldy, or?
Well, actually, I thought that there were many places asking the PCAC to look at that, that we did not look at. In fact, Paul knows that we talked about numerous police policies that are in the manual that could be improved to highlight the need to be cautious about profiling, so.
But I think, yeah, isn't that different from what we're talking about here? And, and that, that should be done by the PCAC, but I thought Paul had a bunch of recommendations that you know, were, were, you know, sort of proposals to make things more efficient, more accurate, et cetera.
But.
Paul, help me out.
Right, that's right. So the recommendations were divided in two, two parts. A lot of it, most of it, I would say, went to the PCAC, as per Marty's suggestion, and that was good. And then there was some things like keeping track of what is it? Stops, keeping tracks of stops so, so that we can retrieve them. I don't think the Select Board needs needs to act on those. I think, I think, I think we're working with Chief Aldarian. He was conveying that to Chief Morgan and also with Casey. Because we, we had difficulties getting certain statistics. I think that was going to be implemented in-house anyways. Am I correct, or does there need to be some type of formal request for, for that to be done?
No, I don't think it does, because these are things that you were doing sort of an ongoing basis. Hey, you know, do it this way instead of that way, because you know, it's more efficient type of thing.
Right. And also like keeping track of search warrants. We had a difficult time in, in tracking down how many search warrants the Brookline Police Department was doing, the types of search warrants. I think they were going to start a log so that, you know, it would have the search warrant, the type it is, whether or not it's administrative, the property, some other information that, that the subcommittee had proposed.
Your business finances from anywhere with SAP concurs.
So I, I thought those things were going to be done in any event.
Yeah, and maybe what I was thinking is that we would memorialize what, what we've done so that, you know, with some record. But maybe that's, that's.
No, but, but within the subcommittee report, you know, at the end, you know, remember you asked that we have just a summary of all the recommendations?
Right.
They're all, they're all broken down that way, so it, there's no problem. We can go back. You know, just take that out.
Or why don't we just leave this alone? I mean, it's in the report. We don't need to create a separate document memorializing, you know, that.
But if something needs to be done, I'm willing to do it.
Okay, yeah, I, I was, my proposal was just to make it more complicated.
I can see why you, you would not want it to be lost.
Yeah, okay. It's not going to be lost. It's in the report, so. Okay, so let's move on to community outreach. We already talked about the walk and talk and the and the SRO programs. Anything else you want to add, Casey? I mean, you, the homelessness task force is another initiative that we got up and running. Is there anything about that or other aspects of your work?
So in terms of the homelessness task force, you know, we still continue to have, you know, the working relationship between the various departments that are impacted with, you know, calls or complaints that, that come in and support. I had a lengthy call today with the director of the Parks, one of the staff in the Parks Department regarding an ongoing issue with one of our homeless and just kind of walked them through what our process is, what the goal is, obviously, to not criminalize the homeless individuals, you know, behaviors and, you know, the, the that it doesn't make any sense for us to be, you know, issuing town bylaw violations for being in a park after night or you know, littering and, you know, making arrests and whatnot. And so we're really trying to, you know, find other alternatives for, you know, working with these folks for getting them resources, particularly in the high heat. We've been doing daily checks. Officer Amendola does his rounds every day and he's bringing these folks some water and just checking in to make sure that they know that the cooling areas that are available. So he'll continue to do that work until we can get a, you know, a person over at the Department of Health that might be able to step in and assist. In the meantime, we're just going to continue you know, our other town partners on that. One additional thing that I will just share, because I'm really excited about it, is an officer, Officer Kristen Healy, who's one of our walk and talk officers, approached myself and Lieutenant Pastor and brought forward to the command staff that she wanted to initiate an LGBTQ plus liaison position. It was really something important to her that, you know, in the work that she's been doing with youth and families, to see that there's very little in way of resources available. You know, for, for people in the LGBTQ community. She's produced a brochure, which we've just added to our website. She's met with every, all the schools. They have their DSA programs, gender sexuality associations. And so she's really, and they're actually not connected, the various middle schools and elementary schools, excuse me, and the high schools. So she's working to kind of bring some folks together and very grateful that she's been, you know, invited by the Office of Diversity, Inclusion and Community Relations and the Transportation Department to assist in the pride crosswalks that are being painted. And so we are really excited about this role. It's a new position. You know, and I think it'll be really helpful for, for youth out there that are looking for some resources or adults. Anyone, she's actually been invited to Center Communities next week. They're having a pride event for their seniors and she was invited to come and be introduced. And I'm really excited about this non-traditional role that she brought forward to us, wanted to initiate with the community.
Good.
That's all.
And by the way, that, that's going to dovetail at some point, hopefully, with the proposal that the committee made to have resources in the Department of Health and Human Services to, to provide you know, health type or health and mental health related type services to the LGBTQ community. You know, which, which is actually very important in light of, you know, the suicide issue or suicide rates, the anti-gay you know, media attacks and, and other attacks. I mean, one of these right wing guys out in some Massachusetts town. That's another issue. But, you know, attacks on gay communities really are really picking up and this.
She shared her new role with various departments in town. She spoke with the library, shared the information for client housing and and, you know, as I said, met with the schools and other entities. And so, you know, I think it'll dovetail really well. She did notice, you know, in doing some of her own research for families that she was working with, that there was nothing on the town website and no list of resources for mental health counseling, for, you know, hotlines, for, you know, learning more information for families that are looking to support, family members that, you know, had to be, you know, an ally. And so she was able to pull together some great information and that's now available on the department website and there'll be a brochure that'll be available now as well. We're in the process of getting that printed, so I think it'll, it'll be a nice combination. And she'll be working with Office of Diversity, Inclusion and Community Relations to, to really get things situated, so.
Okay, let's see. Next, personnel. Elizabeth is working hard for the town of Brookline with the Norfolk County Commissioners. So she's not here, but she did send a, a memo, actually a letter to me, I guess. Okay, she sent it to me. It's in the packet and I'll, I'll read it because it just describes some important things that she's working on. Unfortunately, unable to attend the Committee on Policing Reforms meeting this evening because I must represent Brookline at the Norfolk County Finance Committee and Advisory Board at exactly the same time. Please give my regrets to all the members. In my absence, please share the following reports. Personnel Subcommittee. Nothing remaining to report at this time. We believe promotions are proceeding via town processes. If Mel can provide any update after I read this, I'd appreciate it. MHSUD, okay, mental health and substance use disorder. Elizabeth likes to abbreviate things. Subcommittee. As the committee discussed at our previous meeting, I have been designated to the task of drafting a memo to Mel Kleckner, Town Administrator, on specifics on the recommendation to develop behavioral health, public-private partnerships so that Brookline residents have more access to responsive and urgent behavioral health care. Although I had hoped to share the final draft of this meeting, there are still some slight edits I need to make over the next day or two. Once the draft is ready, I will share it via Google Docs so that all members of the committee can comment on the final document before it is delivered to Mel Kleckner. I suggest that be copied to Select Board Chair Heather Hamilton and HHS Director Dr. Jett. The primary recommendations are, one, to engage at a high level with the current state rollout of community behavioral health centers, which are aligned, it should be that, are aligned with the emergency service teams and mobile crisis intervention. This is the optimum time for Brookline to actively participate in the development of the CBHCs, which will serve Brookline. The CBHC has a 24/7 front door, that's a word the governor uses apparently, and will house the emergency service team, which will serve all residents regardless of insurance. There will be substantial new funds available for services through the CBHC and community behavioral health partners. CBHCs will be charged with providing immediate access to urgent care and to decrease incarceration rates. They will be the entities that will fill the gap in services following first responders stabilizing crises that the committee has identified. Recall, we talk about when when police officers go to substance abuse crises or mental health crises, they are the first responders, usually because it doesn't happen during business hours and they're around 24/7, and they are trained in CIT training. So, you know, they go stabilize situation because CIT training is all about de-escalation. So they stabilize situation, make sure that the person as well as the surrounding people are safe and the situation is stable. And then the person goes usually, I think, usually to the emergency room, which is very, very bad. So what this proposal would do would be provide provide beds or other resources that a person whose crisis has been stabilized can go to instead of the emergency room, which is really like going, I mean, this is really a bad situation, and get the type of behavioral health support that will enable them to begin the road, you know, hopefully to recovery. So, you know, this is really important, and it really speaks to the findings of our mental health and substance use subcommittee. Second, okay, so she goes on to say, number two, to appoint a point person within HHS to make the linkage with the CBHC procurements and rollout. Assess how each and every medical and behavioral health provider in Brookline can participate in the CBHC rollout and to support the homelessness task force, including development of the task force as a formalized hub. And a hub is a system whereby it's sort of like a round table where various agencies and services get together and talk about specific issues and and specific individuals' problems and problem solve in order to get the person, in the case of a homeless person, into some type of housing or some type of stable situation that that is not risky for them. Okay, continuing. Let's see. And this hub is designed to encourage further linkage between law enforcement and housing, as has been done in Jamaica Plain, where they have a very active hub. Okay, and then she thanks the committee and me, so that's not relevant, but let's see.
Don't we have this?
Yes, it's in the, it's in the, in the packet.
With all due respect, I'm not sure you need to read it further.
Well, this is her report.
Oh, I know that.
Okay, so anyway, any questions on that? You know, she's, she's responding to the fact that the state has now developed a fairly aggressive initiative to deal with behavioral health issues in a better way than they're dealt with now, or more coherent way. And one of those is development of these community behavioral health centers that will provide services that we have now, but are sort of scattered about, but provided in a very coherent way, which which will not do away with police involvement in these crisis situations, but will provide a way in which there can be follow-up to, you know, first responders stabilizing situation and enabling people to actually deal with the problems that they have. So this is exciting, and Mel, you will get this when she's finished. And it's an opportunity we really can't pass up because there's money involved and there's services involved that will be very important to our, to our residents, so. Okay. Unless there are any questions that maybe I can answer, we'll move on. And.
Bernard?
Sorry, yes.
I want to add one thing on the personnel, which is, for those who don't know, at town meeting, the first or second night, I guess, town meeting members can ask department heads questions, and I asked Chief Morgan to talk about the police survey and the morale issue, which he did, and there was a bit of feedback afterwards, and I'm gonna send a response to the feedback, and I'll send a copy to the members of this committee. Gave rise to some debate.
Good. Send it to Devin, and she'll circulate it to us.
I have two minor questions before we adjourn, so I'm just alerting you for the agenda.
That's the end of the agenda that I have, unless someone has other things they want to talk about. In turn, wrapping up the work of the committee, so why don't you go ahead?
All right, so the two, one is ministerial. The, I see the packet got posted by agenda, but it, can it include the other documents that we got today? The SRO, walk and talk, complaint procedure. I think that the public should have access to them if that's possible.
Repeat the question, Marty?
He's asking whether the documents we talked about today are in the packet. I think they are, right?
No, they're not.
Everything is in the public packet.
Now, the packet that you put the link just has the minutes, not today's stuff.
If it has the minutes, it should have everything else, because you can.
I looked at it, it doesn't.
I will be sure that that is.
I had a reset in the packet.
Yeah, I did too.
We got it today, but the link that was sent out during our meeting, I'm looking right now. It doesn't, it has agenda packet. And that, I'm looking at it again, is 24 pages. It's just minutes.
Okay.
That can be dealt with later.
Yeah, Devin, could you, I think everyone else was able to find it. Could you?
I have, I have the stuff from, that was sent to us this afternoon from.
I just want to, this is actually a good teaching opportunity for any members of the public who may be listening on Big or in the attendee list, but if you use our online agenda management program and you click on the agenda item, like, don't go into the packet. That's, I don't find that to be very helpful. It's one long PDF with all of those documents strung together. But if you are looking at that link that I shared earlier in the meeting, and then you click on the, so for example, item three, discussion of select board consideration of school resource officers and walk and talk officer programs. If you click on that blue underlined section, on the right-hand side, you'll see supporting documents pop up. And then that's a really, it's an easier way to identify which documents go with which item, and then you can click on them individually, and they'll just pop up as their, you know, respective PDFs.
Well, Devin, actually, let me, I'm sorry to belabor this, but if somebody from the public wants to know what happened at our meeting, they're gonna go to the agenda site. They're gonna see that agenda with a link to agenda packet, and they're not gonna see the documents you're talking about.
Yeah, I mean, this is, that's my recommendation for people who are following along and and reading that, but, you know, we have kind of a robust effort going on based on the passage of Warren, Article 22, where there will be lots of little videos where people can see the best way to engage with these these types of documents and also some parameters around how posting will work for other boards and commissions. So it's a work in in progress, but everything is up online. I did just check.
All right, well, so I'll let that work in progress continue because that Warren article is something I started in 2017. So the other question is, can we get an update on the status of the PCAC, Bernard?
I asked Heather when she's gonna schedule that, and she says she wants to talk about it on the 15th, so.
I can also shed a little light on that. We are interviewing, and we are interviewing candidates beginning next week, so that's where the process is.
I don't know these things now that I'm not chair.
Oh, isn't it kind of a relief, Bernard?
You don't know.
So the first round of interviews, I think we have three candidates up next Tuesday. We have an additional three candidates up on the 22nd, and I think three more on the 29th. So that is, that's where the PCAC stands at this point. So I'm actually hoping that we can avoid an entire agenda item on that because it's clear that that's where we are in the process.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, by the way, Janice pointed out a few grammatical errors, grammatic grammar corrections.
I got them.
Okay, pardon me, you got them? Okay, good. Okay. Anything else? Oh, Casey.
I thought you mentioned this earlier, Bernard, in Elizabeth's email, but is there an update? I know this committee voted to recommend the filling of open vacancies within the police department at the command staff level, and I didn't know if there was an update on what that process is looking like.
I don't have an update. Mel, can you give us an update?
Sure, that is potentially on the agenda next week. But very, very shortly.
Okay.
Board will be making promotion shortly.
Okay.
Yes, I'd like to make a comment.
Okay.
So it's unrelated to anything we've talked about here.
Okay, we're at the end of the meeting. This is when you do it.
So often when I've seen your image and my image on the screen, I said, wow, we really look alike. Except I'll concede that you are better looking than me.
Clean living.
And all the differences, nothing personal, just different points of view.
Or maybe different lighting.
Yes.
Okay, anything else? Hey, let's go eat dinner. Thank you, everyone. Oh, and by the way, unless the.
Are we just ending? I mean, are we, are we, is there an official termination point to this?
Is there, I mean, like a ritual?
No.
No, it's just, it's just our last meeting.
Something.
I don't see any reason why we need to meet any further, although I'm willing to if people want to meet. Again, just to.
Well, for instance, when you said I should not send something to everybody, that suggests the committee still exists.
Oh, okay, if we don't exist, there's no meeting law issue. So you want to officially disband?
I'm indifferent. I'm just asking.
Now, you know, Elizabeth is working on, you know, her memo still. And you know, she's gonna circulate that to the committee for comment, so maybe we we need to sort of stay in, stay intact. And if necessary, I can call a meeting, but.
Well, I'll tell you what, my suggestion is this. I'll leave that to your discretion because since the board appointed us, I think the board can fire us without us convening to vote to terminate.
Because if the board wants to terminate us, they can do that.
At some point, I think, you know, I should put closure on this on my six-page, single-spaced resume.
Okay, good. Okay, anything else before we end or we, oh, it's not adjourned, but in this meeting, pending further call in the future? All in favor? I'll do the, I'll do it. Let's see, Sasan?
Yes.
Paul? Yes. Rob?
Yes.
Casey?
Yes.
Ron?
Yes.
Marty?
Yes.
And I don't see Raj. He must have left, so I vote yes too. Okay. And until next this meeting, this this committee meets, or unless or until we see each other in the streets as we're ending this pandemic. Goodbye. Bye.